That's exciting.
Yeah, so she, she's the one who sends me stuff way early in the morning. And so when I wake up, I have it, and then I leave her stuff for her morning.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, Board of Selectmen, special meeting. It says regular meeting, but it's really a special meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so special meeting, Thursday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so today what we're doing with this special meeting is just going through some things that we wanted to talk about yesterday morning, but unfortunately, one of our selectmen couldn't be here, and I thought the discussions were important enough that, um, that we wanted to discuss it with you here. So, we appreciate that both of you came up tonight. And so we're here to talk first, um, up on our agenda is the tax incremental financing policy approval. So this is a policy that we've received, we've had a chance to read, I hope. Um, but I kinda wanted to have Kamoin and Tom. Tom worked on it with the redevelopment agency, just to kinda give you guys an overview. And then if you had any questions from your reading, that you could check with them, because they're much more fluent in the whole thing than I am. So, I'm gonna give it to you guys to say something, and then if they have any questions, we can ask our questions.
Um, yeah, um, well, the redevelopment agency has basically been doing, just to bring you all up to speed on what we're doing, a three-pronged attack, if you will. Uh, we're dealing with the environmental issues at the site. That should be wrapped up hopefully within another month or two. Determine if there's gonna need to be any rehabilitation down there. Second thing, uh, we're doing, of course, is next Thursday is the public input for the master plan down there. And then there'll be another public input session probably in late November, early December. And we hope to have the master plan wrapped up probably by January or February the latest. And then the third thing is the TIF. And we finally got the lawyers together to haggle all that out. And so the TIFs of townwide policies, again, this is a townwide policy, not just specifically for the town property down in East Adam Village. It's a townwide policy that can be used in Mudus, with the Mudus Master Plan, et cetera. So, and I'll let Jim take over with the fine details of exactly what we can and can't do with regards to the TIF policy.
Yeah, um, so, and I'll give overview, that way we can always go into as much detail as you want, right? So, 'cause just a couple of things, I just wanna make sure that, um, are brought out. So, this is a culmination of work over the course of probably close to two years or so, a year and a half, Tom, I think. Where, um, we were, and we were assisting the community with the, um, idea of creation of a TIF district that would overlay with the, uh, village, uh, master plan. And in the course of that work, um, and throughout, towards the end of it, it was decided that an actual TIF was not needed just yet, the creation of a special district, if you will. And, but, the, that some guidelines and policies for creation of a TIF and implementation of it were warranted. And that's partially because, um, and Tom's alluded to this, that, um, there's potential for further districts within the community. So, rather than have sort of a hodgepodge of dist- districts that are done in different ways with different processes and objectives, it was, let's create a policy that could serve as a guidance for the process and the creation of TIF districts and any related developer agreements associated with them. And the reason that's important is because, um, it provides a few things, and I'll just hit on the high levels. One is, it gives consistency across the community. So like, in terms of like, the look and feel, in terms of how the process is done, how, what the objectives of economic and community development are. It creates fairness in terms of like, vetting it, and also, should you have any agreements with developers or businesses that come out of a TIF district, the policy helps guide some fairness provisions. And then finally, it helps guide impact. In other words, you typically are trying to do these things, and the policy states it, that you're trying to grow the tax base and support a healthy economy within the community, and the policy guidelines and process is meant to do that. Um, so a lot of work went into it, and I don't mean just by Kamoin, like, uh, besides the redevelopment, um, agency, the, um, we've had multiple meetings with staff and public meetings, um, and, and then volunteers like Tom and others that were meeting regularly. So, um, that was the culmination of, uh, a draft policy. It's been vetted by the, um, working group, uh, and the staff. And then, it's in, in order to take effect, it has to go for a vote. And in order to do that, we also worked with the town's attorney to make, 'cause we're not attorneys, by the way, I just wanna be clear, but we worked with the town attorney to get the language so that it could be adopted or sent for adoption as a policy. Irene, I'll stop there, and you can kick off questions or go as deep as you want.
Sure, so, um, I'll just give my two cents first, just because I've, you know, wanted to, um, especially with the work and the breadth of, um, information that they had to go through just to get this study done in initial stages of this, for the redevelopment agency, for the village. I felt that it was important to like, save some of this, you know, this work. And if there's a way to make it so that the, it's a policy that can handle, um, the entire town, whether it be, again, at the village, obviously, but, you know, in Mudus, we're looking at a Mudus master plan, and we should include, you know, whatever we might think about doing in Mudus, as well as even the four corners, like where Shag Bark is, and that kinda thing. Shag Bark, that whole area there is actually our biggest taxpayer base as far as commercial goes. So, if there's more stuff that's gonna go in there, you know, we should be open to business, and that's what this TIF policy does. It's not really, um, it's not really suggesting that we are on the hook for anything other than, we're just open for business, we're willing to have a discussion about whatever tax incremental financing we could do, depending on what that looks like, per this particular development idea. So, it just kinda leaves the door open to say that we're interested in having businesses here, we're interested in working with developers, depending on what it is, and whether it's gonna be, uh, commercial, whether it's gonna be a mixed use, whether it's gonna be housing. Um, I think all of those things could come down the pike, and it's something that would live on our website, like, under economic development. So, um, or it can live under the redevelopment agency as well, as far as their, their pages. So, um, it's not anything that we're obligated to. If we get into a situation where we're setting up a particular tax incremental financing plan with a developer, then it goes to town meeting, then the town comes in and learns about what it's gonna cost us, or what it's not gonna cost us, and then it becomes something of substance that we'd have to vote on. But right now, it's just saying, we're open, we're here, we're ready, come to us, come talk to us. We'd love to talk to developers about putting something in town. So, that's kinda my take, I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate the work that's been done. And I don't wanna lose it, because basically what they've come on it, how this has come around to, the area in the village right now is not substantial enough to give any huge tax breaks to a developer. But, we still have the work, we still have the stuff that we've come up with, and it's well worth kind of immortalizing it somewhat into a policy. So, that's my take. But, if you guys have any questions about it, I've been in the meetings, and I kinda am okay with it. But, that's why I wanted to make sure you guys did it before we put it on the website, so that we have this policy now. Any questions?
Um, yeah, and I first wanna say apologies to everybody for missing yesterday's meeting, sorry about that, wasting everybody's time. Just one question that I just was thinking about, would this policy have made a difference to the, and this is just an opinion, not, would it have made a difference if we had this already in place to the first person a couple of years ago, or three, it's probably been five years now?
To Jeff's?
Would that have made a difference? 'Cause I bet, the money aspect, it seemed like, was obviously a major factor in that plan. In your opinion, would that have made a huge difference?
And it probably also would have brought in more developers. Because when they put the RPO, Mr. Riley was the only one who responded. I think if we had a TIF at that time, we probably would have had more developers come in, at least to say, okay, what are you willing to do for us? And that type of thing, so. I mean, my experience with them, once we did, we did it in Canton, a lot more developers started coming around and saying, okay, you know, maybe we can work something out here. 'Cause it just gets that developer over the top, financial top, if you will. If they're a few million dollars short, or whatever, it helps them. And that's, this is, you know, we're not gonna fi- totally finance any developer, but it helps them get to that, over that hump that they're having trouble with. You know, if you wanna add anything to that, Jim?
Yeah, I'll just be brief too, because it's a very good question. It's, it, just to answer it too, without getting into the specific details of that proposal, but what it would, could have done is, um, it could, it helps both the town and a developer by, you, it, it, it moves along with the vetting, like, in other words, if you're a developer, um, you know what the rules now are. So, like, you may look at those rules, that, i.e. the TIF policy, and say, boy, in order to bring forth a proposal, this is both an opportunity for, to get, potentially, to get some community support, subject to voters, um, but in order to do that, here's the, here's the guidelines, here's the application, here's what the values are of the community in doing that. And by the way, here's the amount of financial wherewithal that's needed to, for a, a project to even be considered, for a TIF. So, it would have, I'm not saying it would have made it pass or not pass, or have the developer go forward or not, but it would have made the process a bit easier and more coherent. Because the one thing I wanna be really clear about, like, there are ways that you can go, like, you always can go and vote around the guidelines, right? 'Cause the legislative body rules, right? And anytime, you can always vote to do, change the parameters and so forth. But, subject to the guidelines, it's not just helping anyone do a project, even if the project is, let's say, put a new roof on a house, or, um, or put, do a really small piece of, of, of needed, uh, business improvement. There's other municipal programs for that. This really says, boy, you better have a master plan, and you better meet these criteria, and the town's gonna work with you with those kinds of things, and so it makes it a bit more rational. So, it's gonna, I think, uh, plus what Tom was saying, it'll help vet and even potentially attract more developers, knowing that you have a policy, and that if they can meet the guidelines, there's a better chance that they could actually make the investment. Let me just stop there.
Protects the town, because as part of the policy is, we get to kinda look at their books, to make sure that this development is financially stable. And you're not gonna pull up stakes halfway through it and say, or, or it's gonna fail within a year, because, you know, it's just not a financially feasible development. So, I think it protects the town too, you know, we can look at, we have to look at your books to see, okay, you are telling us that you're a few million dollar shore, let's see that, and, you know, we can start discussing. We can check, make sure that your numbers are correct.
It also helps with the, if I can just add one thing, Irene, if I may, just one thing I forgot to say, it does help with the public as well. They know that you've put time into a policy, and that you're not, um, a, a lot of times when TIFs are first explored, and if there's a developer involved, they gets, they could potentially be seen as, oh, you're giving favoritism to this developer. Um, and you wanna minimize that, like, even though you're not trying to do that necessarily, there's always a perception. So the policy says, well, hey, we're open for good kinds of development, subject to our policy, and we'll consider it. And like, it helps explain that to the public, that you had a thoughtful, logical policy.
Just one last one, as I'm, I see you settled on the two million. I remember that conversation from
Oh, yeah.
A while back, right? This may be a dumb question to ask, but, is the two mil, or, part of the two million, can it, does it have to be new construction? Or can that, part of that be remediation of a site? And the reason why I'm asking that is, let's say, remediation of a site is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you're only putting fifty thousand dollars of investment into it, and I'm sorry, a million, a million and a half. Excuse me, a million, I'm sorry, I don't get that high, I get nervous with the, with the second comma, I get nervous. So, at a million and a half worth of remediation, and then you go, and you only spend five, uh, five hundred thousand dollars worth of new construction?
It's a good question, I think I know what you're talking about, let me just make sure I can clarify though. Like, in other words, if there's a site, and the remediation needs to have site work, like, cost for environmental remediation, or infrastructure remediation, that money that's being spent, does that count towards the two million? The answer is yes, and, um, and I just wanna be clear, um, and, um, actually, I was gonna say, it depends on whether it's public versus private, but you can use TIF funds for public or private, and it actually does include, when, when you look at development costs, it's not just new, like, hard construction, like, the building itself, it's the site and the building, and anything to get the site ready, which would include remediation.
Where I was going with that was site-specific to, let's say, the town garage area.
Yes.
You're gonna tear it down, you can remediate, but you're only gonna put up one business, one building. That's not really necessarily developing the whole area, but, I, I mean, we talked about, I think you guys talked about piecemealing it, and the possibility of piecemealing it, instead of having one design that covers, you know, where we're getting into the, maybe the twenty to fifty thousand, uh, twenty to fifty million dollar range. So, I, I guess I wanna be clear as, so, we're looking as small as maybe potentially one building, one site.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
And that would work, uh, and, and by the way, I'm not trying to, I don't wanna start by saying you go, go early and say, hey, you can always overrule it, but in the case of something like that, realize, with a town property, that's kind of a, a little bit of a special case, so like, you, A, don't wanna be holding on to a property forever, you wanna make good use of it in some way, and then, B, it does probably require some remediation based on all of what, that you, that, the studies that you've been doing. So, in other words, that cost would, even if it was just short of two million or something for, for that first phase of work, you could still vote to include it in a TIF district. And otherwise, there's, you can always override it for a compelling reason.
Um, I, I don't think this is a, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name.
Jim.
Jim.
I don't know that this is a question for Jim, but it's certainly a question for, uh, probably Tom and you, Irene. Has, uh, land use planning and zoning, have they looked at this?
Uh, as far as the TIF policy?
They were part of the process. Kamoin interviewed numerous staff people, Jim Ventress, P and Z people, et cetera, to draft this final copy.
Have they seen the final copy?
Don't know who has seen it, not the final copy, I haven't, don't, don't know who has seen it and not seen it.
I think there was multiple occasions where we actually, throughout the last year and a half, where we did present the concepts and the workshop and with them as well.
Right, I was curious to.
Those exact days.
If they have seen the final policy, and if so, what, what their thoughts may, might be.
To go along with that's a good question. To go along with that, the redevelopment agency voted unanimously to put this forward?
Yes.
Anything else, Tony?
Um, not, not in terms of, uh, questions, no. Um, I, I would personally, before, my thoughts on this are, um, I, I do think it's a good idea. I would really like to hear what land use planning and zoning and Board of Finance feel about this. And also, I think timing-wise, um, a month before the election, um, I don't know that that's, uh, it's, it's fair for us as a board to approve this, knowing that our board is going to, to change.
So, the first question I can say is, I can send this over to Jim to have him take the final look at it, although Jim had been involved, but he can certainly say yea or nay on it. Our job next with this policy is to send it over to Board of Finance and let them look at it. So, it's, we're not putting this up on the website yet, we send it over to Board of Finance next, is that, that's correct, right?
It's a Board of Selectmen policy, uh.
Oh, so, actually, so Board of Finance already looked at?
From what I understand from meeting with the attorney.
I'm trying to figure out which, I always get the Board of Right.
You know, it's a policy, would it be courteous to send it to the Board of Finance? Just to have them give it a once-over, that we're putting this up? 'Cause like, they do their financial policies, and they don't, we don't see them first, they, they do what works, but they, you know. But, I would say out of courtesy, their next meeting, they're not, they're not, um, for that to, just, they shouldn't do this outside of, because, I mean, they could all read it outside of their meeting provision, just to have them agree with it, you know, outside of the reading process. Same with planning and zoning, like, you say you wanna give it to Jim, but is it, are you asking Jim, or are you asking planning and zoning?
Well, planning and zoning is on the committee, so. Right? Planning and zoning was on the steering committee for this. Some of them, not all of them, but some of them are.
Well, there's a member of RA who's on the
Planning and zoning, right.
Who's on planning and zoning, yeah.
But it's, yeah, they're willing to
And they were, they were talked to, I know that, part of the interviews, all the interviews that Kamoin did with various stakeholders.
Right, putting, selecting those members was kind of the hope, that you're, you're gonna cross, you know.
Yeah, I don't get all their needs.
Check, check from that point of view, if you will, or your expertise, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the point.
So, I mean, if, if you wanted it, one of their meetings, they need on the second board.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to send it over to planning and zoning, I'm happy to send it over to Board of Finance and say, this is policy that we'd like to add up to the website in regards to TIF financing. We wanna put it on, I believe we talked about putting it on the redevelopment agency's pages, and the EDC pages, similar to the tax, um, planning things that are already on the EDC website, um, as far as, you know, helping, um, businesses when they go in and they redo a building, or et cetera, et cetera. So, we can, you know, make sure that they sign off and saying, yeah, sure, I'll definitely put it up there, and we'll go ahead and do it.
No, I know the EDC chairman has been to almost all, a lot of the meetings.
He had a lot of, yeah, he had a lot of say in this, yeah. Yeah, he had a lot of input.
In and out, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I know that, you know, it's members of the redevelopment agency sit on other boards and commissions, and I do think that's in the best interest, but I just, personally, I am not comfortable voting on this, um, because EDC, planning and zoning, and Board of Finance, land use may have concerns or thoughts that we didn't address, we didn't think to address. I'm not personally comfortable voting on it until I, I would be more comfortable after they had a chance to.
Sounds good, I will put it to them, make sure that there isn't any concerns that we need to address, and otherwise, we'll be good to go, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate you coming in.
Great questions, you all have a great night.
Thank you, you too, thank you, Tom, for coming in, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. All right, perfect, thank you for that, guys, and thank you for your questions. Okay, next up, um, cell tower discussion. So, on, um, East Adam Colchester Turnpike, you probably already know that there's a big, um, whatever about, um, a cell tower that, um, a private, um, landowner has decided to put up a cell tower, and, um, there's a big, you know, to-do about it, because some of the people want it, some of the people don't want it, and it is whatever, whatever it is. In the process of all of that, um, I got involved, obviously, um, and asked, you know, do, can we put it, um, you know, can we put the same tower, whatever, you know, uh, things on the one that we already have down by the transfer station? Is there other sites, et cetera, et cetera? Um, one company, the company that's here, um, in the packet here, um, came to us and told us about the tower that's currently on the site of 440 Town Street, which is our Company One Firehouse, that they could put a tower there. And the way this works is that they build the tower, and then they get T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever wants to put up a tower, and then we get the income, similar to the way that it's working down at the transfer station. So anyways, we asked that the Siding Council look at that location as to whether or not that would help the scenario over at East Adam Colchester Turnpike, and whether or not we could do that in lieu of that, because it's on our town property versus private property, and also, it's not gonna be, you know, affecting the lake view and all that kinda stuff. Um, it doesn't solve the problem at the lakes, so, it's no good. However, it's still a good situation, because we still have holes in that area, that a tower, a better tower than what's there now on the site of the firehouse, this would solve. So this would solve everything over by Shag Bark, going up and down, you know, Town Street there, as well as up and down Mount Pernas. So that whole corner where's a huge dead hole, um, that will solve that. And then there's also, I was telling Eric earlier, that there's also a hole, just as you get beyond, like, coming this way toward Mudus, um, after you get out of the hole near Shag Bark, you get cell service again, like, when you go through the transmission lines, for some reason, you get it. But then it's shortly, like, right after Brook Hill, like, right as you hit the first edge of the field at Balix, you lose it again. So this thing clearly would clear that hole up, and it will certainly clear the big hole that's at, um, at Shag Bark. And this is always something that we, you know, we hear complaints about, as far as, you know, cell tower or cell use. So anyway, this company wants to put up a tower, um, because it's a town-owned property, um, they're telling us that we don't have to go through Siding Council. And talking with Jim, he is suggesting we go through Siding Council anyways, um, for the process as well as future processes, if we want to put up, um, additional, um, you know, like, if, if, when we put up the tower right now, this company says that T-Mobile and somebody else, I'm not sure whether it's AT&amp;T or Verizon, it might be Verizon, T-Mobile and Verizon are already interested in going up on that tower. So there's already two renters that will receive income from, but if we had to go and get a third one, we'd have to go back to the Siding Council to ask if it's okay to add it. So rather than having to do it at that point, if we do it ahead of time, then we go through a clear process, it's transparent, the whole bit, and we can go to Siding Council, and then we can see if we can do that. So, I'm just kinda letting you guys know that, um, we're gonna try and, you know, go through this and go through the process of trying to get another cell tower. Obviously, it won't be up before November 17th, but I'm just letting you know that this is a process that'll be ongoing, and hopefully, maybe it'll be a place where we can pull in some revenue, and kill a dead spot.
Would it extend past, like, Shag Bark corner toward Hatheim at all?
I think it does.
In and out.
In and out along Town Street, yeah.
'Cause if you know I'm, I'm on the far end of Town.
Right, 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 and you guys have a tower out that way too, though, don't you? Like, up
I'm okay at home, but once I
Turn the hill and come up?
Yeah, and then there's like, little brief, annoying, you know, not enough to lose the call, but enough that you can't hear what the person just said.
Give me two seconds, give me another quarter mile, yeah, exactly.
Give me a second.
Yeah, um, I'm not sure, but there, it, it might be, and I can check with Jim and see how far that, yeah. Um, he looks at these, there's a map in there, and you're looking at it. That map tells you exactly what, um, you know, what dots are being covered and what dots aren't and all that, and, um, I can check with him and
It wouldn't really change my opinion, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, 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 good question, no, especially, you know, like, when we, we all know where the dead spot, sorry. Travels across town, so. So anyway, so that's just, I just kinda wanted to let you know that we're gonna go ahead and, I think, I think the best thing is, is to go through the Siding Council and just get it done that way, and that way, everybody kinda knows what's happening, and they publish hearings, and they do all the things that they do, and, you know, puts us through our paces and whatever. But, I might, I think we probably have more people interested, I think, obviously, Balix probably won't like the idea, because it's right across from them, and they have to look at it. Plus, I think there's some kind of, some kind of tower on their property that some people are using, whether, like, as a repeater or something, but I don't know if those people would jump and go to this tower, which means it could be income loss over there, but I don't know, I'm watching, I don't know what the deal is. So, I know that there could be an effect there.
It's, you know, um, if the Siding Council gave us permission, what, do we have any, any, what kind of timeline? Like, would it take a year, less than a year, or more than a year?
Yeah, no, it'll definitely take a less than a year, but we, because of the process that we have to go through, the first thing we have to go through is, um, zoning has to give us a
Eight dash twenty-four.
Eight dash twenty-four, which is, I don't know, some kinda zoning thing. So, we have to do that first.
And we need to go to town, we need to go to town meeting, because it's multi-year contract, and, you know, same you did for the, same as we did for the tower at, um,
Transfer station.
Transfer station, but building it, I'm not quite sure how long he said in his emails, it's been
Yeah, we've gone back and forth a lot of
I was just curious, but probably like, fairly quick.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be up by maybe next summer, if we did it, if we got it done, yeah.
But I mean, the lease needs to be, I mean, it's very, the lease needs to be reviewed, the, you know. But, what Jim is looking for, for, to go to planning and zoning, to at least get an eight dash twenty-four to begin the process, is he, what did he say? He asked for, can I get an official request from your office, which kinda means Board of Selectmen, to consider this proposal for the record? So, that's kinda what he wants, that you're in agreement to explore this and, and move forward. You know, like, not necessarily do it, but move forward with consideration of this proposal. It might get thrown out, it might not be what you want, but he just wants that in order to move forward.
For planning and zoning.
Okay.
Sounds like you're gonna give me.
Okay, okay, with it, okay, great. Yeah, I mean, you know, if nothing else, um, it's, you know, money that we can continue to collect because people wanna rent the tower, so, like, okay. Plus, um, the other thing too is, and this, I think, is part of the site, Siding Council and/or just being able to put up cell towers, that our emergency services will also be able to use it because currently, they do use what's there at, at Town Street, but this will create a much better, better signal.
I was wondering, like, if I had a.
Yes, yeah, thank you for, cause if I didn't, maybe you would've brought it up. But, yeah, so what's gonna help us is there.
Do the tower without being made.
Yeah, so.
Cause you have it on the.
Yeah, so that'll help us there as well.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I wrote it in here.
Oh, it's okay.
Oh, you love it, I will make a motion to consider the proposal from AXR Wireless Two LLC to construct a communications facility at four forty Town Street, Company One Firehouse for the town and to enter into a land lease agreement regarding such facility.
Motion, please.
Alright, perfect. Okay, and then the last thing is just a, well, second last thing, it's just a follow-up on the automated speed devices. Um, Eric asked some questions at the end of last meeting and I wanted to get back to him on this. Um, so the cost to get the cameras now is, they've changed the program because they've realized that the program needed to be changed because of the, you know, the fact that towns have to come up with twenty-three thousand dollars to buy a camera. So, what they've done is they've said, and, okay, so what they've done is they've said that they wanna do leasing. So, they wanna lease the camera, so it'll be two thousand dollars a month, per month, to, to rent the camera. With the rental of the camera comes all the recalibrating, taking care of it if something happens to it, et cetera, et cetera. So, the maintenance that comes, the maintenance costs come with that two thousand dollars a month. So, if there's any issues with it, if something happens to it, if, again, we need to change it, if we're finding that we put it at ten miles over the speed limit and everybody goes eleven and we really wanna change it to eleven, you know, whatever, I mean, if those changes and things need to be happening, it comes within this two thousand. So, we don't, wouldn't have to be paying for additional maintenance and/or work to be done with the cameras. So, that's one.
On that point.
Yeah.
Let me just ask this, cause I thought they always offer the lease, and it was actually cheaper to buy the cameras outright. Because this puts us at.
Yeah, they're, they're responsible for the problem.
Okay, that was the difference.
Then we're responsible.
There's only gets included, you buy it, you own it.
This, this ended up being twenty-four thousand as opposed to twenty-three thousand, I think, the other way.
You know, so if you calibrate it, you replace it, it gives.
Okay, good.
Somebody smashes it and breaks, you're on a lock. You know, if somebody smashes theirs, they get sued.
And I'm also gonna add on to that, um, um, point that you brought up, is, is that because these things are the things that they are and they have to be wired a certain way and they have to be this, that, and the other thing, and they have to be installed, et cetera, et cetera, they cannot be moved. You can't move them around town. So, that camera that we purchase, if we do this and put it on Town Street, if we put it on Town Street, stays on Town Street for the life of the law. Like, that's it, unless we decide to take them out, you know, entirely, but it's not like we can take it out and move it from one place to another. The way they move it from one place to another is they actually buy another camera, you know, they start another camera at another location. And what, um, Jim said from Washington is he said that when they went to DOT to get approved, they got three sites approved so that they could put them in if they decided to put in a third camera. I think they started with two cameras, if I remember right, what he said. So, if they wanna put in that third camera, they already have pre-approval for it, but these kinda cameras can't. But to that point, just FYI, I was driving through town the other day or last week, whatever, and we went by one of the other cameras. And my husband said, oh, is that the camera that gives out tickets? And I said, we don't have a camera that gives out tickets yet, but the point, that's the point, right? Is nobody knows that that's the camera versus that's the camera, even though the ones that do, um, um, do have the camera that finds people, there's gonna be a pre, um, warning to that camera, right? So, like, as you're driving down the road, I think it has to be, I don't know, thirty feet, then another one a hundred feet or something. Like, they are forewarned that there's a ticket giving device up here, you are about to drive by it, you better slow down, it's supposed to, you're supposed to be going twenty miles an hour, whatever it is. So, people will forget, and we have all the other devices that are already up in town that we are moving around, that are movable. So, I think that, again, the purpose of this is not necessarily to, to get money, it's to slow everybody down and stop speeding in town. So, I think that, you know, and, and to Jim's point, he did say that this has definitely changed behavior, people are slowing down. Will they slow down right at this camera? They should, they're being warned to slow down, or they're gonna get a ticket. So, anyways, that's the camera stuff that you had brought up, I believe. Um, the other thing you brought up was that the time for the police to confirm the violations, you know, because they're gonna be clicking through to make sure that, you know, this wasn't a fire call or a police call or something. Um, in the beginning, when I talked to the, um, police chief in Washington, they said that it was a bit onerous the first week or two. As try, just trying to get used to the, the whole system and how to do it. We have, um, one police officer currently who is in the office most of the time doing regulation stuff and accreditation stuff. And we have a second police officer that's actually on, um, um, administrative duties only, that she is also available to do this. So, I checked with them and I checked with our trooper as far as, you know, being able to do this, and Jeff was in on, on the conversation. And they said they don't see a problem. Now, in Washington with the two cameras, they say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty minutes each day that it takes to just click through. Sometimes it's less, but on an average, fifteen to twenty minutes a day, and they're just clicking through to make sure it's illegal or a confirming that this is a violation, and that's what they do. And they're literally just saying yes, no, no, yes, no, no, and they're just going through a list.
And that, they're saying.
So, they don't see that that's a big time crunch.
They're saying the yes or no to the, the violation or the, the.
Yeah, like, sometimes they'll say no because the, the license plate is blurry, so you can't send it out anyways. Sometimes they'll say that, oh, that, you know, that's, that was a call and that, I know that car, because they're running to the, the fire department to get the, you know, the truck. So, they'll know certain times where that's not, not a speeder, not a speeder, not a speeder, or if it is a speeder, it's justified. So, that's all they're doing, just that piece. And again, they say, once they get used to the system, it's.
The finance director said in the beginning, it was a bit of a, a bit of a, a struggle only because it was new.
Yeah.
And until everybody got in their rhythm, then, then it was alright, cause they got a lot of phone calls.
Yeah.
The selectmen's office was getting negative phone calls. And I think he said him and two other employees. How did you say the Board of Selectmen, I can't remember.
I think he said the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, Board of Selectmen or the Appeal People, so that was my next question, my next answer was that, from what Jim says, it works out pretty well, they've probably done like two a month. So, the people come in and they say why they sped, why they didn't speed, and then we can get back to them and say, pay your ticket or not pay your ticket. I mean, I would assume if somebody's like, fighting that hard not to pay, like, if they're sitting there and this is their third ticket, then I would think that we would probably say, well, you gotta pay this ticket, like, you're speeding, can you just slow down? You know.
The lawyer told a really funny story when she talked to the finance director.
Oh, yeah.
She said, there was a guy that called into me.
Oh.
Called about his ticket and he said, I gotta tell you, because my wife is always yelling at me, always like, always yelling at me, I'm slowing him and everything and everything. So, he said, I came home one day, I just slapped the ticket down in front of her and said, and you think I'm slow?
That's cute.
And she also said that, um, it is special revenue fund because in that little thing I believe, it's got a specific, um, use for, for the funds that it has to, that it has to do, so it would have to be a special revenue fund.
So, it can be self-sustaining.
Right, well, that's what she said, she put it herself, they have to, maybe, we were debating, you need two months, three months, four months of upfront money to pay the two thousand dollars, like, you'd go to the Board of Finance and ask for contingency money to, whether it's six thousand or.
Six thousand dollars, get three, three months worth.
Eight thousand to cover you until you start getting money come in, and then it should self-support.
So, there's a great point to, in that really investigating where to initially put that.
Yeah, so, in your packets, you should have the, the ones that we did the tests on, because those are the three streets that we'd probably go to DOT because we've already done it, these are the streets that we're gonna go and say, this is what we'd like to get approval on, right? Falls, East Adam Colchester Turnpike and Town Street, Town Street, right? So, there's where we wanna go, um, you know, give us approval. And then you can see in the boxes on the top right here as far as how many people went through at zero to thirty, two hundred and eighty-eight, thirty-one to forty, almost two thousand cars. That's on East Adam Colchester Turnpike, on Town Street, it's almost, oh, it's thirty-six hundred cars that went through over the speed limit. And then on Falls Road, it's eighty-three thousand, eighty-three hundred cars that went over the speed limit through there. So, maybe we go to Falls Road first. You know, and then that would give us more money to go somewhere else, you know, as far as that goes. So, again, to, to what Linda just said, we can go to, um, Board of Finance. The, when the camera goes up and goes live for the first month, according to the program, again, this is through the state as well, um, we do not charge tickets. We just send, um, a warning, so we just said, you've gone through our ticket, you know, you've gone through the camera, over the speed limit, such and such, and they send warnings. So, the first month will not receive anything, once it goes live. And then the second month is when the ticket actually goes out and you get a bill, and then you have to pay the bill. And so, you know, if you did even three months worth of contingency, you're probably at a point where you're gonna be able to pay it. But, I mean, we could do more if we feel that necessary to do, so.
Before you go to Board of Finance, that's the money paid, then you'll have to get this all in, yeah.
Correct, so that, I was just gonna bring up, the next step here is if you guys are in agreement, we can go to the ordinance. Because I think the only thing that we had left on the ordinance was really how much over the speed limit we wanted to do. And I think we went back and forth between ten and fifteen, so I don't know what you guys feel at this point. I think, I think at fifteen, we'll win, I think at ten, we'll win, I don't know that it matter, I mean, we could split the difference and go twelve, I mean, I don't know what you guys want to do. Go eleven?
Before we get to there, what is the contract term? It's two thousand dollars a month for how long?
I think it's three years.
Hold on.
Cause we have it, it's in your.
Do we have any kind of opt-out clause?
I thought I asked, I thought that was asked, and I thought, yeah.
I believe originally it was two or three years, but.
Yeah, I think it's three years.
They're changing their terms of their contract, so.
Right, yeah, I think, so they, we could opt out at any time, but.
Oh, a ninety day.
Yeah.
That's right, they changed it, a ninety day cancellation clause for any reason.
Well, that's in the beginning, but what's the, the, like, if we signed the current contract.
Yeah, so it says requires an initial term of three years, auto-renewable, one year terms after that. And then, right now, it includes.
So, three year.
Yep.
Term and.
And that ought to renew in one year after that.
Right, but if in some, sometime between hundred days and three years, we find that this isn't working, what are our options to get out of this contract? Because in as much as I, you know, I'm happy for Washington that they have had a bulk of tickets. Well, I'm happy for people who got the tickets, but, you know, they had a lot of tickets initially, but they're, they're only been up and running for a few months. So, we have no idea what those numbers are gonna look like nine months out, or, um, you know, eleven months out or fourteen months out.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can, I can, I can ask that question and I, I'm looking at this going, requires an initial term of three years, ought to renew after one. And then it says also includes a ninety day cancellation clause for any reason, so I'm not sure what that means, like, do we have to sign or do we not have to sign? Do we get to cancel after nine days or do not get to cancel for nine days?
Is, I'm not super worried about the first ninety days, I'm worried about, you know, eleven months, fourteen months in if we're only getting.
Yeah, but.
Even for issuing, um, cause we'd need to issue over thirty tickets a month to break even, and that is assuming that all thirty of those tickets get paid.
So, you're suggesting me.
So, uh, that's what I'm looking at, like, at what, what are our options if it's, if it's winding up costing us money and it's not effective?
I will find out.
Because they haven't been in existence in Connecticut, and in any of the towns we're gonna get long enough to track data a year out. So, I would just like to know.
It's a good gauge on the left-hand side.
I was wondering that myself.
It's not labeled.
I think it's number of cars, right? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it should be, yeah. I, I also don't know what SPEI is, anyone does, that'd be good to know, I'm sure it's somewhere. That little fifty percent, where it says fifty percent, SP, it, it may be in the first packet. It could be speed.
Yeah.
And it got cut off, because you can see way at the bottom, it says fifty-five, but the five, the second five is kinda cut, so it probably is.
Yeah, I think it's actually in the first packet, I can go back, but.
Yeah.
But a, again, my concern is, you know, we're gonna get locked into a three-year contract and we have no data from any town in Connecticut.
Pass, what, six months? Alright, I will find out.
I mean, you're covering your numbers, at least, it, just with the orange, no?
Yeah, oh, definitely.
You're covering your numbers needed, again, I would, again, I tend to err a little bit on the forgiving side, on the miles per hour over speed limit. As, I, I would, I would hesitate to cut it right off at ten, I'd probably be a little more lenient, but I mean, it looks like you're covering at, at forty-four hundred cars.
Yeah.
Who are in violation besides the one that are already in the red.
Right, but this is, this is the initial study, which is, was a limited, limited time, it was a week, but still, uh, one of them was, one of them was longer.
Two weeks. Two weeks, both of them, all three were two weeks, so six weeks on the.
Well, the East Adam Colchester Turnpike was the January fourteenth to twenty-second, so that's a week.
Oh, so maybe they did it both directions.
Town Street, Town Street was the longest one, so that was like a good chunk, and Falls Road was about a week.
Yeah, so they did, um, they did, I guess what they did is, they wanted to get it in both directions.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Yeah.
But I'm just looking, I think initially we were talking about a, like, a sixty-five dollar fee, right?
So, we're looking at.
Well, I wasn't looking at the number of, like, thirteen or fifteen dollars. Total.
Yeah, so, the, the ticket itself is fifty, that's what we get, and then it's thirteen above that is what we have to pay DACRA.
Service, yeah.
For the fee, so what we were saying was why don't we just do fifteen as opposed to thirteen? So, it's, so the total fee for a ticket would be sixty-five dollars, and if it was a subsequent second ticket, it would be eighty, because it would be, I'm sorry, ninety. Because it would be seventy-five, which is the, you know, second time plus, plus the fifteen.
So, at fifty dollars to the town, we would have to send out and collect forty dollars a month, assuming first offense. I'm not gonna calculate the second offense.
In the, in the fifteen dollar fee, the, the bill is sent out by DACRA, we don't do any of that.
No, but we still need to collect forty infraction fines at fifty dollars each to break even, to pay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I thought you, okay, I thought you.
The two thousand dollars a month, that's why I would like to see some further data or what our options are if we start to lose money.
Got you. The opt-out clause.
After ninety days, like I said, a year in, if everybody stops speeding, which is the goal.
And still fees not.
Well, if you, if you look at ninety days, you take thirty away, cause you're not gonna charge for a month, it'll give you good data, but it won't.
Actually, I was just reading their thing too, they don't charge us, camera leasing fees don't begin until sixty days after the program. I don't know if that means that we, I mean, say we start at September one and we're not, we're doing violation, we're doing warnings September, October, we go live. And they're saying they don't charge until sixty days after going live, which means we wouldn't actually get charged the first two thousand until December? And I'm gonna clear that with them just so to understand that, but that sounds like we're gonna be ahead of the game.
And also clear with them, just to make sure that when they, cause when we first got this contract agreement.
Yep.
That was based on buying it for twenty-three thousand dollars, now that they've gone to the leasing option, I wanna make sure the contract.
This is on the lease one that they gave us.
Uh, yeah, but the contract, the whole.
Oh, oh, the contract thing, yeah, 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 yeah.
I just wanna make sure there's no changes to the contract.
Yeah, we'll ask them for the leasing contract.
Right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Cause, cause Tim did make some suggestions to the change of the first contract.
Yeah.
Especially in the terms thing.
Right.
You know, he wanted it, uh, term of this agreement shall not renew automatically, you didn't, our attorney doesn't like automatic renewal, like.
I don't either, cause you don't have a chance to look at it.
And then, um, notwithstanding anything, um, contrary herein, either party may terminate this agreement at any time by providing the other parties, um, minimum of ninety days written, advance written notice.
So, he's suggesting that, or that's in there already?
No, but their contract already says at any time.
Okay.
So, to me, I, I'm thinking at any time is at any time, not any time after three years.
Yeah, so I didn't. Okay. Well, I'll verify that, that is what it is.
But, let's verify that, and then also, if we have several months in row where we're not, either not issuing tickets cause people finally stopped speeding or. If we have several months in row where we're not, either not issuing tickets, cuz people finally stopped speeding, or. We're just not able to collect, like, they're just not paying the fine, um, because we don't really have anything to hold. I would say to hold over them, but we don't have any means of making them pay the fine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we have to give. The company ninety days notice, that's three months, that's six, or we wait to get out of, so I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clarify all that.
Exactly what those financial obligations for the town may look like before we make a decision.
We do have the opportunity to put it on a state road, do we already have data from there, or can we get? State traffic counts and speeds, or, probably won't get speeds, but traffic counts.
We'll get speeds, but we can get counts. I mean, Falls Road is already a state road, so is, actually, I think all three are.
They're all, all three are, aren't they?
I think East Town Colchester Turnpike is too, so they're all state roads already, are the ones that we asked for.
East Town Colchester is not.
It's not, it was.
Town Street, that's eighty-two, right?
Yeah.
State, yeah, one fifty-one, one forty-nine, yeah.
Hundred forty-nine, eighty-two. Right.
And this, we get to keep all the money even though it's a state road?
State road, that's why after you approve your ordinance. While, while you're waiting.
We have to go to DOT for them to approve us, for the cameras on.
Correct.
DOT plan, and then they have to approve that, so this is their program by statute.
Yeah, I just didn't know if like we had to give them a dollar for every thing, you know, that we collect, I don't know, just asking. Just asking.
Don't give them any ideas.
Well, thank you for finding those.
Yeah, no, no problem, and I'm, I'm more than happy to go back and make sure that we have it exactly the way we want it, and we all feel comfortable doing it, so. But I think it's, I think it's a worthy investment in. Changing behavior. And a problem that obviously every town is, is struggling with this, and more and more towns are actually doing it, I just heard of another one, I'm trying to think who, Meriden?
Marlborough.
Huh?
You said Marlborough?
Marlborough, Marlborough is already, Marlborough's already got it up, it's already running. Um, yeah, so Marlborough, Meriden, oh, is it No Haven that I heard about, it's somebody else, a smaller town, I'm trying to think who it was.
No Haven was what you said.
I don't know.
Um, just curious, the ones that we have up now.
Yep.
We, do we buy those or do we lease them?
Those are bought.
Those are ours.
Yeah, those are what we have, some of them are the police and some of them we've, um, recently purchased. Um, actually, we recently purchased with funds from last year's budget, the police budget, because we had leftover, um. I think there was what, three that we purchased, this la- the last purchase was three, and then we still had. I think there were like two that were in the police before, and then the two that came from the state program, one's on B B. And is there a second one on, and that one does data.
And we were two.
And we have our speed, you know, our, our trailer.
Our trailer too, oh, yeah, the trailer too.
You know, one that will get speed up.
So every now and then that one goes out, the problem with the trailer is it runs out of charge too quickly, so they're like, go back and get the trailer and bring it back.
That's what we, we did ask about, um.
And it's big and it's hard to find spots for it, because.
For this, you did ask about mobile, like, speed cameras, but as you said, if you want a mobile, which is. Easier to move, however, everywhere you move to, you have to have wifi connected to it, it was.
Until we get more towers up, our wifi's not so good.
You know, you. And they were more expensive.
It was good to hear Jesse say that the one that's on Town Street, they're slowing people down, which is awesome.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so yesterday.
You missed that, Eric, Jess, Jesse was, Jesse Scott was here, uh, yesterday morning to, uh, share some data from the Heat Smart program.
Yeah, we.
But before he left, we just kinda said we were tabling this, and he stood up and said the one down by his house on Main Street is, uh, making noticeable improvement, and he. He feels safe locking his dogs now for the first time in a while, so that's awesome.
Yeah, and he actually said, I'm speaking for several of my neighbors, like, they're happy that that thing's there, I have one neighbor of them that are, is complaining to me because. The sign apparently shines a light in their window or something, and he didn't understand that, and I'm like, that's alright, I'm still working on it, we're still trying to figure out how to move it. And where to move, because there's only, like, there's a small window where it can be moved, but it is what it is, but yeah, so it was just great to hear that, you know. Residents are like, yes, thank you, it's working, so, yeah, alright, I'll.
Still, still a lot of hurdles to jump through.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so we'll keep going on that, and again, I'm, um, you know, just FYI, and I appreciate your sentiments on certain things that you've said. I'm not trying to rush stuff through because I'm coming to the end of my term, I'm just trying to move stuff along, like the TIF thing, we've been working on that TIF thing for years.
I, I understand that.
So, I'm not trying to like, get this stuff done, I'm just trying to finish, you know, finish where we are, and if we can finish it, great, if we can't, it has to move forward to the next. Administration, my hope is, is that it keeps going, so.
We're gonna keep working, keep working, that's right.
Yeah. Alright, so last on the agenda tonight is, um, our tax refund for a new tax refund that we didn't have yesterday, which is three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents to. What is it going to, Damien?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, you gotta read it off of here.
Oh, okay.
Cause I did put it on the cheat sheet. Because he gets through cheat sheet.
You wanna pronounce that last name, please?
Damien Anglis.
Anglis. Uh, to award a tax fund to, uh, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents to Damien Anglis. Do I have a motion?
So, look.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if there isn't anything further that you guys wanna, oh, there is, okay.
It's very exciting here.
Oh, that's right, yeah, absolutely, please, yeah, thank you.
We got gold.
We got gold.
Very nice.
Um, so it's the Sustainability Team, uh, through Amalia's hard work, we have achieved our gold status officially now, uh, yesterday?
Yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday, um, we're so climate, uh, leader, so we have gold, gold and climate leader, and. The celebration, um, for all of the sustainability towns, uh, sustainable towns in Connecticut is actually gonna be at Goodspeed. On October twenty-eighth, I think there's, you do have to.
Is there a time? I didn't see a time in all that.
I believe it, I wanna say it's six o'clock, but I'm not sure. Um, I, you do have, it's free, but you do have to register, and so if anyone, I would encourage anybody to come on out.
Well, I'll definitely be looking.
And applaud our, uh, our team for their amazing hard work, and it's not just the Sustainability Team, just, I don't know how. How much detail that you have about it, but it, Amalia has tracked all of the good works that all, all sorts of organizations and entities are doing across our town, which is. Really representative of like how hard our town is just working to be sustained, which I think is really cool. Glad it's somewhere kind of culminated in one place, which is good, because then we can see that. So I'm glad that, you know, we did what we did, and I'm, I appreciate, obviously, the Sustainability Team and all the work you guys did on it, but. You're right, there's a lot of things that we've done in town to, you know. Preserve our town and, you know, keep it going, and, yeah, so all good stuff, so thank you for bringing that up, I. I was thinking that earlier today and then, I don't know, fifty other things happened.
Alright, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you both. This afternoon.
To the next one. Eric, everything okay at your house?
It is now, yeah, it just.
Floating away over there?
It's not that we're floating away, no, there was, there was no water.